We stand. Father, we thank you for a beautiful place that we live in. We thank you for today and your love and your grace. God, I pray as we go through this meeting that you will guide our minds, guide our thoughts, God help us to strive toward the the business of our community and God thank best for our community of all involved. And God, we thank you for just the place that where we can serve our fellow man and you've got we loving praise in your name. At this time, I call the Swain County Board of Commissioners Work Session, October seventh, twenty twenty five at five thirty to order. Phil, will you lead us in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we want to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting to ensure our county is, our business of our county is conducted fairly and respectfully. All remarks please be directed to the whole board and limited to the topic at hand. Our audience members are asked to remain respectful and to avoid interruptions, outbursts, profanity, or any other disruptive behavior will not be permitted during the meeting. As the chair, I'm responsible for maintaining order and may call anybody out of order if necessary. Failure to comply will result in being removed from this meeting. Thank you for helping us maintain a respectful environment as we work toward the business of our county. Do we have any adjustments to? Okay, all right, first up is Vaya Health, Ms. Shelley, is she here?
She has to be rescheduled.
Okay, we'll table that for our next one. All right, next is the Marion and Black Library update, Ms. Ellen Snodgrass.
Well, first I want to say things are looking up because things are coming down. If you've driven by, you can see the front portico is about half on the ground right now, fences up, of course. I have a few things I wanted to do just to, it's kind of like a quick little tour that she has. Is it working? Okay, there was one before that one. Make it bigger, possibly. It's an, it's a, it's just a graphic of the, there you go, of the exterior, just to kind of show you where the construction zone is, where the under construction inside the library part is and customer parking. We also do have one accessible space up there, which we don't have on this map, but we will change that and the book drop. So, and just to say that we're operating as normal and have been since Friday, the nineteenth, so. I think that the staff is parking wherever they can and we're leaving all that for for customer parking. Then you can show the next one, that'd be great. Okay, so this is basically showing what the interior is like, what is, so you can see again, the entrance on the top and that's where the circulation desk is now and also reading area. We also have things that are favorites, like the DVDs that people like to rent and the new books and the magazines. And there's several tables there, so people work on their laptops and they're sitting, sitting in there. The hall across the back, which has the staff offices on it, has got, we put the Jim Cassada Outdoor Collection there. And then, of course, you can head straight on into the community room, which is completely usable. It also, not shown, has an emergency exit there in that room. And then the two restrooms, which are the two that we currently have. So going back into the main room there, everything basically along across the upper wall of the main room, down the left side, across the bottom, and then the fiction, that's all, none of that was was moved. That's all basically where it was. Also, the Christian fiction and the large print are exactly where they were in the past. Also, the computers are exactly where they were. So basically, we've been moving around paperbacks, young adults and the audiobooks. And then, of course, as I have said before, the children's area, which is in the under construction area, we made, we created a location for them there. We were able to get basically everything in there. Well, not seasonal stuff perhaps, but the books, the DVDs, the magazines, the children's play area, plenty of chairs, you know, chairs for adults and children, et cetera, in that area. And also printer is there. And we, we do have that print capability, you know, you can print from anywhere and come by and pick it up. And let's see, that is pretty much. Oh, yes, so, so the entrance, and then, as I mentioned, it's not shown on here, we should change that. In the community room, there's an emergency exit and also there is an exit off the main, the main reading area over into where Fontana Regional is now. That's just inside the large, the main room off to the left. So we are, we are good on our emergency exits. We've had several story times and everything's worked out pretty really well. And of course, having the community room, we still have all of our adult programs, the exercise classes. We can do whatever we, what we've been doing there and that's where NC Works is set up. So we have NC Works the same two days a week that we've had. So this is just the corner. And just to show you the signage and we're, we are going to have our own sign, probably about a twenty foot sign. It's just taking a little while to get the art through. So then, but we do have a sign there that tells you to come this way and then we have signs that tell you to turn this way, whether you're coming from veterans or from rector. And then sign out front and you can see the accessible sign there on the wall and the book drop over to the far right in that first picture. Yeah, over there, so, and we'll probably keep that, we hope to keep a drive up book drop. It seems to be working really well. So, and this is where you come in and this is the circulation desk that I mentioned. It's about probably forty percent the size that it was before, but that's fine, people can drop off their books. And those are the new books there. And then, as I mentioned, on the other side of the room, I don't have a picture of that, but you've got the DVDs and the self check and, and a bunch of tables and chairs. And then this is just looking into the main room from the circulation area. And you can see we have a nice table there. I've seen the digital navigators working there with their, with people who come in. And then the computers are still where they always were. So you can see how that looks across the, and there's a seating area that we have, some nice chairs in the, in that area. And then that last picture is, that's about, about a little more than half of the kids' area is, has got the train table and then also the coloring areas. And then there's two other smaller areas that I don't have a picture of that, one has a desk. So an adult and child, we have some tutoring that goes on. And then also, you know, lots more books for them to, to, to choose from. That's, that is really all I had for you tonight and just encourage you to stop by and come see for yourself. Any questions?
You guys got any questions for Ms. Ellen?
Oh, I didn't, I should mention that we will be having, every two weeks, we'll be starting owner, architect, contractor, OAC meetings, starting on Wednesday, the twenty second. Dr. Bobby Lottie, and then that would be Jeff, myself, Mark, who is the onsite superintendent, and Andrew, who's the project manager, and also David, the architect. Pretty much in person every two weeks, starting on the twenty second. And we also have software, the ProCore software, that they can put up items that they want us to look at. And I think there was, there's a bunch of pictures that got put up today by the superintendent and they'll put up, you know, other, other things as they come along that, that we, we all will have access to. So it's very, very open dialogue that we have going with all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen. All right, next is our budget amendment one and this goes with the Axon presentation. So I asked the sheriff and, and you guys who were a part of that, can I talk to us about that?
I'm gonna be brief, I'm gonna let Mr. Fabian do the presentation. But obviously, we've spoke about this for the last several months, the need, I feel like, for body cameras, for all our officers, including jailers. We're also asking for four in-car cameras in this bundle as well. And that would go for two transport cars that travel all over the state, some in Tennessee transporting prisoners, as well as our introduction guys, which includes our K nine car, just obviously for reasons for that. But, you know, obviously, due to issues that we've seen in the past, I feel like for liability purposes, you know, not only does this protect us, it protects the public and it protects the county. I think this is something that's much needed and I'm gonna let Fabian take over from here. Be glad that he'll take probably help with the questions, I'll answer what I can.
It doesn't look like it's saved correctly. Good evening, everybody, my name is Fabian Morrow, I work for Axon directly. I'm here as a support personnel for this group, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew why I was here. Apparently, my presentation didn't save correctly, so I just, I'll talk freely. The body cameras they're looking at as a program offers right now thirty-five cameras with four units, like they talked about for in-car. These cameras are the same cameras we use currently with certain groups in the federal space across, as well as military. We have them used in over a hundred and fifty countries as of right now, so they're very well built, they do what they need to do. They have capabilities that are more than just a camera, they offer AI packages as part of it. This includes transcription, translation, live transcription, live translation in the field, offers two-way comms as well as live feeds and an actual geolocation in the field. So that's what they're currently trying to do. Quite a few agencies surrounding this area, as well as in the tribal nations, are using this same platform. It does offer a lot of transparency, a lot of backend security and frontend security. So there is no manipulation of the camera itself, it has its own digital fingerprints, as well as its own audit trail. Again, we have this deployed across, I would say, majority of the federal government as of right now. And they have a lot higher standards than just state council usually. With that said, the system as an ecosystem allows you to not only upload videos, but also allows you to manage, retain them without you having to have a server, software, anything actually hardware-based in your actual software, or I'm sorry, your network or your service now. So the uplift is, it's all cloud-based, you have direct access to it when you need to from the agency level and as well as it's always protected, okay? Always protected being we've been around since two thousand and nine storing data for the US government, as well as local, state, federal, tribal, across the board, international even. They cover it? Okay. Roger that. So I'll pass a couple of cameras around so we can actually see them. Get hands on with them. They're very easy to use, I would say, pretty much user-proof on the lowest level. Someone who can remember to press a button twice will activate. They interactively activate with light bar activation on in-car camera systems, so the four that they're asking for, as well as it'll allow you to activate from a taser deployment. So for example, if an officer or a deputy is dealing with something else and something escalates zero one hundred, they have to come out and use a taser, it's automatically going to activate the camera for them. So less thinking, action in between. It also makes sure that you can record what you need to, every event, every interaction that needs to actually be recorded, especially if it escalates very quickly. Part of the system, the backend system, you do have access to, the agency will have access to share links out to the public. So if somebody caught something on recording, whether it be ADT, Ring camera, cell phone footage, pictures, they can actually send a link to someone in the community willing to upload those files, okay? And that's all done digital, meaning a deputy does not have to show up to someone's door to ask them for their phone, ask them for their computer server, they can literally just send the link via email or text. On top of that, with the ecosystem, these cameras, as well as in-car camera system, offer live feeds, which is something that's actually part of that quote itself that they received. It'll allow you to bring in live feeds on an active situation. So if you consider the most major critical that you can think of, possibly an active shooter situation at a school or a church, if there are cameras in the field, you can actually get live intel and feed it to the public or possibly to dispatch, giving live intel before anything actually happens, what's going on. These cameras can do quite a bit, like I said. Now, we do offer as part of that package that they're looking at is redaction. So when they do need to redact something sensitive nature, they can, being something that you're not going to release to the public unless it has redaction on there. Maybe it's somebody who's not fully clothed or possibly receiving medical treatment. You can have that redacted out if you need to. Any questions so far? Correct, so this camera does have buffering features in place. Buffering is what we call pre-event buffering. While it's powered on, it's in a constant loop for a certain period of time. That period of time can be set from zero seconds all the way to two minutes. Now, how that's maintained ultimately is by the agency, but the idea concept is it's always recording video, capturing video only. For example, if an officer is talking with another officer or deputy, they're just discussing whether it be a live case, active situation, that is considered private information, but if something happens in front of them and they're not thinking about starting a recording and they come out with a taser or they activate the recording, it'll jump back in time for that set period of time of video leading up until what caused the main event. Again, this is on the front end. So once they stop the recording, it goes back into buffering phase, you always have that captured. So once it's activated, it jumps back in time, pulls that video into the main recording, so you always show all the things that led up to that event, if that makes sense. Which one? So this camera does have live translation, can translate in the field. So if you have somebody that doesn't speak English, you can press and hold a button, it will detect their language. You can give direct commands to the camera, it will actually repeat your commands in their language, as well as it will determine what language they're speaking and feed it back to you in English from the camera itself. It currently does up to ninety-seven languages.
I know you had said something about the, the community report, you know, that is, that is the police or the, the agency asked for that, it doesn't just automatically.
No, so there, there's a second part of that too. There's something called public portals part of the request. So if something big happens, let's say you guys had a parade or, and something happens at the parade where there are multiple people that have evidentiary value, whether it be private security video footage, CCTV, Arlo, cell phone footage, pictures, they can actually create what's known as a public portal, it's a link that they can provide to any media group or any website. Ultimately, it's a free-for-all, upload what you need to. What happened at that event, that date, that time, if you capture anything, please go ahead and upload. In their system, they have the option to triage it if it's actual evidence. If you get somebody who accidentally uploads ninety pictures of their cat instead of the one video they're trying to upload, that's where it comes into play. So they get to triage that.
Yes, sir.
When, when a, when an officer goes on duty, he would turn it on, right? It would be on the whole time he was on duty?
That would be dependent on SOP, but majority of the agencies out there do that unless they have a very specific function.
Would there be any way to tell whether the officer turned it off?
Yes, yes. So every button pressed on those cameras, it's part of the chain of custody. There's a chain of custody, not on just the equipment, there's a chain of custody on every user, every action, every piece of evidence, every case folder. Even when it's handed over to the local prosecutor, local prosecutor hands it over to the public defender. There's a track, there's literally a trail from the moment you power that camera on. Correct. So if, if let's say it was recording and it had a loss of power, whether it was a malfunction or if it was damaged or if it was intentionally shut down by a button press, we can tell if it's an actual malfunction, if it's a user error or if it's an actual intended purpose of powering it off. Now, there's a, a couple of features we can enable and this is depending on what the agency requests. But for the most part, if there's an option where you need a secondary button to intentionally purpose shut that camera off, you can put that in place. So there is no chance of, I hit two buttons by accident, there's a process. And that is all logged in the chain of custody as well.
And I'm guessing each one of them will have the officer's name on, on whatever.
For deputies, yes.
Right, right.
So for deputies themselves, I will say it like this, once a camera is assigned to a specific user, every video uploads with their name on it, every time they access the video, it's uploaded. It even timestamps by a half-second mark, so if all of us were to access the same video, it knows who got in first, it knows who hit actual play first, it knows who backed out of the video. The system retains every action in the system. So think of it as a physical evidence locker for law enforcement, they have to log in, sign their name when they need to take evidence, go look at it, review it. This system does it the moment you log in from this page that you're seeing on the screen. It knows even your location of where you're logging in from. So if you're accessing it from home, if you're accessing it from a secure network, we can lock it down accordingly.
So this, this thing could work as a GPS too?
It does have geolocation and GPS built in.
You could tell exactly.
Pinpoint, you're talking maybe thirty feet, it's based on cellular, so you can triangulate, it's pretty, pretty accurate though. What we're doing at Cherokee this week is we're actually showing them how that works from a higher level, not just body cameras. You can see when a body camera is actually activated, whether it's manual or if it was done by a taser. If it was done by a light bar, which for the vehicles that you guys have, someone hits code three for those transport vehicles, you're going to see the body camera and the in-car camera on the map live and you're also going to be able to see what activated, what was the cause, whether it be light bar, taser activation. You can also see the difference of location of vehicle. So let's say a deputy gets out, takes off running through the woods, you'll see them moving live in the field and then you'll see their car stationary at that last low location. It's very good at what it does.
I agree with that. You gentlemen have any other questions?
One more question. This fund I'm looking at here, says general fund and general fund, that money, we've done something? It's out of the fund for the Sheriff's Department?
No, it would come from fund balance, it's additional money that was not budgeted or allocated because it wasn't discussed during our budget meetings, it was after the fact, so it would have to be additional funding and this would be a yearly funding to them.
Yeah, that's, and also that's wrote down into like a five-year deal where payments over here.
This would be enough cameras for each one of the?
That would cover all the deputies and that would also cover the, the shifts on the jail. We just have to program the jail, you know, for like sergeant, detention officer.
This would be the yearly cost?
I think it was roughly about seventy-three with both the, the body cameras and the in-car, those four in-car cameras.
Much trouble would it be to reprogram them as a deputy come off duty?
There's a risk across the board, especially if you're dealing with deputies and corrections officers, as well as even if it's a pool. The risk is ultimately if someone forgets to reassign it. So how it works with evidence, which I'm sure you guys are aware, if I take that camera that's currently assigned to you and let's say you're the deputy that's the previous shift, I come in, grab your camera, there's got to be some downtime. One, uploading videos, two, charging, and then three, someone has to reassign it to me. If I take that camera without it being reassigned and I go out and handle five, six calls, I get involved in a major critical incident, your name is on that piece of evidence, you're subpoenable to court, why are you on that evidence? And then why do you have access? And then it digs a little further of, well, how come this happened, what's the purpose? Where is the video? You can always find the video, you can track it by date, time, case ID, but if it's assigned to somebody else, I can't see your videos. So I have to go to my lieutenant, I have to go to my captain, my sheriff, my assistant chief, say, hey, I need access to this video because I took it without following proper protocol. And then ultimately, now I'm bringing whoever I'm asking to reassign that evidence to me, to now enter into the chain of custody themselves. Again, this system holds everybody accountable that touches it. It is very good at what it does.
What is the recharge time on that?
On those, five to seven hours if it's completely dead, completely dead. Now, most agencies that will run twelve-hour, thirteen-hour shifts, three to five hours, roughly, three, two, five. Sometimes I say that kind of fast, people think I say thirty-five hours, three, two, five. I'll be very clear with that, sorry, I had a big cup of coffee before I came. So it has a docking station. The docking station acts like an evidence technician for the most part physically, like a normal person, except for it's a dock. The moment you plug that camera in, it starts charging, uploading, it maintains all firmware, software. If there's an internal function that's not working correctly on that camera, the docking station will initiate itself repair. So it's something that someone doesn't have to maintain, like a computer or cell phone when you get software, firmware, or maybe something doesn't work on it, the docking station fixes that camera. All the brains are in the camera though, so it knows where it belongs, knows who's, which agency, which deputy, which officer who it's assigned to directly.
And, and, and these cameras will have warranty the whole five years and they'll be replaced halfway through.
So the current program that you guys have listed has something called TAP upgrade. Lifespan on these is two and a half years. With a TAP upgrade program at thirty months, we refresh all your equipment, provide new training. So by refresh, we refresh you to the latest and greatest. If you come out with a camera tomorrow, you'll get the next generation with applied tools that you already have in place. We refresh all of it. So if we get a camera that's broken, decides to, you know, somehow end up under the wheel of a vehicle because it got crushed, we can still recover videos off of it and then from there, all we need to replace it for warranty, I know this is a recorded meeting, so I'll just say it, sales hates me when I say this, but we just need to hear the three words, happen on shift, warranty covers it, simple as that. So if someone drops it in the toilet, somebody accidentally leaves it outside their car and it goes skipping down the highway, same thing, these are pretty secured though, so the only access you would have from this has to be plugged into an actual agency account docking station. Does that help?
Any other questions?
Would it be like entering into a contract with you?
Not with me, but with the company, yes. So what we do is we house your data, all your evidence into a secured cloud, government cloud for the most part. That's where you can retrieve, you can send it to the prosecutor's office. We offer prosecutor accounts so that you're not constantly burning disk, thumb drives, you're not walking over and handing over evidence and it's also secured with digital fingerprints across the board. What that means is if I send it to him, he is now entering into the chain of custody. He sends it out of the agency or his office to someone else, it tracks and traces all the way to the end source, who it's going to. So if someone says, I never got that, resend it, you can look at the chain and say, yeah, you received it on January nineteenth of twenty twenty-four. At this time, it shows on January twentieth, you actually accepted, received and downloaded it. So there's accountability across the board. Five years, well, I'd have to look at that contract specifically, but most contracts are five years, sixty months. So throughout that sixty months, we retain, we support, we train, we, ultimately, we maintain the life of the program. You're provided three levels of support and you also get five days of actual in-person instructor training. So it's not like we just drop equipment on you and you kind of have to figure it out, it's more like we want it to be successful.
Uh, is just presentation tonight, we can think about it and add in a regular session vote on it? If that's the pleasure of the board?
Is that on the budget amendment? Would that budget amendment?
That would be the budget amendment number one, yes. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. All right, next is our Rec Park Advisory Board Committee. We've been taking up names for the opening of that and we did receive two names. So on your desk this evening, you got the two applications as well as a letter from the Rec Park Board Advisory, or Advisory Board, excuse me, of their recommendation. I would, I would, I would think we could think about this and bring this back at our next, so you guys can look over the two names as well as the, the letter and then at a regular session vote on who we would like to put into that position. So you can guys can peruse that, uh, within the next week or so. Any questions on that, guys? It's just one position. Yeah, just one opening on that, or that board, so.
We've only got two requests.
Yeah, two, two applicants are the only, those two applicants were the only two that put in for it, so. Um, so. All right. Instead, the, the animal control presentation, we got a copy of that a couple of meetings ago. There were some ad- additions.
Yeah, and there was just some changes in there. We just updated the language as far as general statutes go. Um, the biggest addition to it was under penalties. We only had civil. We have added criminal because that is an allowable thing. So under the penalties, you'll see a lot of it's just, um, you know, some word changes, taking out ands or something like that. But the violations were also added, so anything that we would be ticketing people for is added and also explained in that ordinance. So, um, this is really the final that the committee has come up with. For the, for the new one.
And this was to approve by our attorney. So, um, we are presenting this tonight. We are not voting on this tonight. Uh, but this is available after tonight to the public. So if anybody from the public would like to get a copy, you can ask Ms. Lottie for it, and she can print, or, or Ms. Cindy out, uh, a copy of it, and she'll print them out for you, and you can take a, a, a peruse of it. If you have any questions, to give us a call, give Lottie a call, um, or give one of the committee members a call. Ms. Gina was on there, Bobby was on there. Um, and, and talk to them about that too as well. I, I think, I think that would be, um, pertinent for that. Uh, now with that being said, I do believe we have to set a public hearing to repeal the twenty fourteen ordinance that was already voted on, and then we also have to set a public hearing to accept this too as well.
Yes, for discussion.
For discussion, yes.
Mr. Chen, I, I, I believe we need to put this in the newspaper and get it out there and get people here to, uh, to really look over this. I was just looking real quick at some of the fines. Five hundred dollars for an unintended, for an unintended goose call? Yeah, you know, I believe citizens in the county needs to see what this is before we do the whole ball.
Okay.
I would go broke if you come to my house because his dog will run in anymore.
Well, I think that's where we can get, get some clarification too, if you have a question like that, to one of the committee members a- about what they're, they're meaning by an unintended dog to this.
Repealing some of the, the, the old one?
So in order for us to accept this, we have to repeal the, the other animal control ordinance that we already have in place.
Taking away some of the, the things that was in and going with what we have here. Is that basically what we want to do?
Yes, that's what you have to do, yes.
I think the biggest part of this is the old one. There's some things added.
Yes.
Well, part of the old one was we wasn't supposed to harm nobody, particularly the shelter was and ready to operation. We didn't go by that, we repealed that. Yeah, I think the public needs to see this and see what we're getting into. And while we're on this subject, Lottie, I would, I would love to know how much money we've got into the animal shelter. And man, ours, our county employees has to be in and see how far over the five hundred thousand.
No, we, we had a, uh, the texture of the walls was, uh, rougher than what they approved. So we went over them and sanded the walls and repainted them. It's basically like a three-day job. Um, to re, repaint the walls is what it boiled down to.
Before, before I think we go down this, we needed a good amount of, of ours, the equipment we rented, the money we spent, before we can show the public what the lies for, and totally now.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good to look at. So, uh, w- w- we still do have to set up those public hearings, which I, I agree with you, are good for our, uh, uh, for the public to look at that. Um, so, um, typically in the past, we've done, you know, right before our, our meetings have been our public hearings. Is that good with you guys, or what, 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 what would your pleasure be of a public hearing?
From what I understand, we can vote, we can do both of them in one, one meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It's essentially would be two separate public, but you can do one behind the other.
Yes.
So you would do one to talk, you know, to allow the public comment on repealing the old one, and then the new one as well.
Yes. And then from there, we would have that conversation in our session to repeal and or accept, uh, either one, so.
Uh, may I have? Have a round of applause. Um, as long as it's, uh, the correct time for advertising. Getting the word out to the public that there will be a public hearing about.
Do we want to start at five thirty for the, does that work best for you guys, five thirty? For the public hearing, and then right after that, we go right into our, uh, regular session? Okay, all right. So public hearing on the twenty-first for both the twenty fourteen ordinance as well as the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five ordinance, back to back at five thirty, followed by our regular session. Is there anything else I needed to add to that newsletter? Okay. All right. And, and we'll work on getting those, those numbers. I think that'd be good for all of us to see.
No, absolutely.
So, all right, next is our, uh, county mayor's report.
Uh, the only thing I kind of wanted to touch on, obviously, we're all aware of the federal shutdown. So I kind of wanted to talk about what that looks like for us. The two biggest departments that are affected are going to be the Health Department and Social Services. Um, Health Department, you're looking at WIC, which is your Women, Infant, and Children Program from newborn up to age five. You're also looking at some family planning funds that we were given that were federal funds that they're going to, you know, be taking some of those back possibly. And then also the chore program, we did receive notification that those funds hopefully will just be delayed in receiving to us, that they're not gone. So, um, there just may be a delay in funding. So as we start seeing some of those financial reports come out, just, uh, keep that in mind, that their deficits may look higher until this gets worked out. Uh, for social services, it's a lot more across the board. You have TANF, which is your Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. So that's work first payments that people get, could or cannot be affected. Um, Medicaid is a federal and state both program, so those could be affected. You have foster care children that are called for E-children, which are federally funded children, so some of that funding could be delayed. And unfortunately, those payments are large, so we're looking at, you know, it could be twenty-five or thirty thousand a month that we're waiting for. And then you have, uh, Food Nutrition Services, which is federally funding, funded, also known as food stamps. Um, could see, we have not heard anything yet, but that could be potential. SSBG, which is some funding for adult workers and, um, social workers, that is, could be, again, just delayed. Childcare subsidy, that's actually the payment for children going to daycare. And then energy assistance, um, as this time of year rolls out, energy assistance starts at DSS, and so those funds could potentially be held up. So just kind of keep that in mind as we see financials, as you hear from people. Um, there may be, you know, if, if the DSS cannot do something for them or Health Department, you know, they're going to do their best to get people the help that they need, but unfortunately, there may be a no in there that we can't control due to this.
Maybe it won't last long.
But that's it.
That's all you have? All right, next is our commissioners' report. We'll start with Mr. Jenkins.
I don't have much. Uh, I've been looking at the pull-off of Dr. Bridge. We're going to have to remove that wall and replace it because they put cross ties in there, and now the handrails are rotten. And if we have somebody to follow up with that, it's something that needs to be done. To replace that wall. That's about all I've got.
Okay.
Um, went to the, um, DOT Transportation Advisory Committee meeting the other day, and what the group got together with the Southwestern Commission, uh, people who are over that, and sort of realigned the safety issues with below Fontana Dam on that stretch of highway, and switching them back to trying to get access to, uh, the East Element, or excuse me, not the East Elementary, but the, uh, middle school, new middle school property. Put those points in focus and all of that, to change that so that we can get the school entrance done through DOT funding. Um, they do have money set aside to resurface that road next year, uh, down there, which will be safety improvements to it. Um, so, um, that much is happening with, with paving. We finally got the cert, the pavement done from High Creek onto the county line, and, uh, that's a much nicer road now. Thank goodness. There's more to be done though. And, uh, I would say if, if you know of places on your road, you're, let DOT know. There's, there's a number to call, uh, the DOT Engineers Office. If you've got broken pavement, you've got stuff that needs to be repaired, or something that's a safety hazard to somebody in the community, uh, let's just let them know, and that's part of all of, all of our jobs. If I can help, call me. I'd be glad to entertain getting some help for those issues. What I was getting at a second ago with what we, we decided as a group here for Swain County, um, all of that was approved for the whole region. There was other changes in other counties, uh, and so, um, they went with the submitted to the state. It's on a point system, and it depends on the, the, I guess, the quantity and the length and, and all of that, of the whole project to get the points moved to a different location. And it's, it's an ongoing process. Uh, they're supposed to, this coming year, I think, finally pave this section of from the city limits out Highway nineteen this way, and, uh, they're still talking about doing sidewalk improvements toward Ingles. They're trying, they're talking about, uh, uh, paving, repaving that, and of course, um, the city's trying to work on their streetscape to get Main Street done, similar to that of Everett Street. And so there's always, uh, that's, that's been ongoing for a long time. But, uh, anyway, getting all of that together and in the right process. So, anyway, that was interesting meeting. The other meeting that I went to was the Soil and Water Meeting. Uh, and of course, if you're a small farmer, you have acreage, you have animals on your property, and you need help, there's all kinds of help out there, uh, if you'll check with those folks. If you need to read a, or rent a cedar, the county owns a cedar that you can pull behind a tractor to reseed a field or, or whatever, uh, uh, and fertilizer spreader and all that kind of stuff. If you, uh, need silt fence, anything like that for erosion control on a project that you're doing, uh, they have that available. All the gals out at, um, Swain County Soil and Water. That's all I've got.
All right, I went and met with, uh, Ms. Melissa Dunn at the Family Resource Center, uh, just to kind of get an understanding of, of what they do a little bit more in depth. I know she came a couple of months ago and gave us a report, but and they're, they're, they're involved in a, a, a lot of different things. Um, and if you haven't been down there, uh, I would, I would encourage you to go see what they're a part of. They, they do everything from Christmas with families in need to, you know, handing out emergency food, and, and so, um, just, just great, uh, a great resource for our families. They also do, uh, family planning classes, uh, for people who, who, who may need a little bit of help. And so, um, i- it's really, really neat to see, you know, that, of course, they, they have some needs, just like all of our departments I've talked to somewhat, uh, so far. Uh, but, um, really neat to see what Melissa and them do, and they're, they're mostly grant funded, so, um, she does a good job with getting grants and, and not using much, if any, taxpayer dollars with the, the Family Resource Center, so that, that was really cool. Uh, I also met with, uh, the Southwestern Commission, uh, with Russ Harris, who was here last, uh, last month with us. And just to kind of get an understanding of what all they offer and do, and just to be, you know, um, just to know how they can help us as elected officials in our county too as well. I mean, they write grants, help, help us write grants for different things. They help us, uh, with, with any kind of project, you know, with DOT or anything like that. They go to bat for us. Um, and it's, it's just another way for us to have a, another arm out there with us, and, uh, there was also a, a representative there from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So I got to meet with him too as well and talk, and so that, that was really good to get a lot of information and I know that, you know, we're kind of not on an island. We got people who we can talk to and, and, and help, so. Um, that was, that was a really good meeting, um, to, to be a part of. David, you got anything? Okay. All right, informal discussion. You gentlemen have anything? I do got one item, uh, last Thursday was it? I went out to SEC, uh, at the Almond Center. Um, and this summer, we had talked about helping them with their sewer. Um, and it was kind of overflowing again with some water in, in the yard. And from the, from the drain field, and, uh, I, I believe we, on the last time we pumped, the, the gentleman who were pumping it said that the drain field was starting to fail. And so it's going to be something that we're going to have to take a look at, um, and kind of maybe get a plan. So I don't know if we need to to meet with SEC with Dr. Tom, or Thomas, and, uh, kind of go from there. Um, but it's something that we're gonna have to address, uh, because the, the, the head start's also connected to that. And, and so we're gonna have, if they close down, SEC closes down, then the head start has to close down. So we have two organizations there that are impacted, so, um.
Has anybody talked to the Health Department, City Attorney, or area?
I, I did, uh, go and talk to, uh, Allison about that and, and Brent about that, and they don't think there is a repair area there, so. Um, we're, we're gonna have to have that discussion about what's next and, and kind of go from there. So, um, it's a, it's a, and a building that is needed and a building that is being used, and so.
That's an ancient system anyway. It's probably a little gravel system.
Yeah. So, and I, I, I assume that the, the the opening to the drain field is probably clogged up by now, and probably can't get through, so.
They're telling you there's nowhere we can put a new system in?
Well, from the plans, and Allison, correct me, they, they, they don't have it on there, on the plans. There, there is no place to put it from what I understand, right?
I believe the tank is a homemade tank, you know, they just formed it up and poured it. It's not a
But there is room there to put a new one. You didn't. I have heard if we quit using that, it goes back to the rock. It's had it for years. Give it to them. I looked into it a little bit, but I don't know that that's a fact. And it is.
I, I think we need to work with the Health Department and just try to, try our best to figure out what's our best, next best steps, but I, it's something that is, you know, like I said, it's not just one organization, there's two. There's two organizations on there. And I don't know about the, the head start and, and all of that aspect too as well. But it's something that we do need to.
Surely if we can put a system, a sewer system right beside the Niner Haven River, surely we can get.
Yes, yeah. So it's just something that we, we just need to, I, I'm just bringing that to you as a, as a, as a thing that we need to look at for sure. Any other? That, that is my only item. Any other things, guys? All right, next we'll, we have closed session. North Carolina GS 143-318.11A3, attorney-client privilege. I need a motion to go in the closed session.
Take a motion.
All right, you got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed likewise. Motion passes. We will return after a closed session. Session please.
Make a motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. At this time, we were just consulting with our attorney and there was no action taken at this time. So next is public comment. You will have five minutes. When you come up, state your name and your address, or yeah, your address. You will have five minutes to speak and no more. The clock is behind me. You'll be addressing the board as a whole, not just one individual on this board or in the audience. We will not make any comments or answer any questions at this time. This is your time, the public comment to address your concerns. No time should be shared or will be shared with, or with any individual. This is your own time. If you have any questions, please give it to us or Ms. Lottie, and we will get the answer for you. First is Mr. Scott Cody.
Scott Cody, 491 Jones Creek Road, reason I'm here today. I'm the new chief of the Lark Fire Department, been chief since July. We have been told we have two paid members. Since then, I've talked to Ms. Brian, I believe is the lady's name in HR. They've made an appointment for me to speak to them about the hiring process and different things. It's going to have to happen in order for us to hire our full-time firemen. With that being said, I've talked with the fire chief in Bryson City, Charles Bryson. He's told me things, those things back and forth. To, to better benefit my community, I need to get the information straight from a horse's mouth and not everybody else. So with that being said, I have a Friday meeting, I believe, or a Thursday, whenever they decide. It's fine with me to meet with Ms. Barker and Ms. Brian and I think fire marshals. I'm not even sure who'll all be there, but it'd be fine. I am going to invite Charles Bryson to this because he says, oh, we need to meet. I would like to ask the commission, both fire marshals, all three fire chiefs, to have a meeting, discuss the do's, the don'ts, the wills, the won'ts, whatever's got to happen with these paid members. And the reason I'm coming here today is because everybody sees Facebook. You can't hide nothing because Facebook popular. Wes Swain's done started a full-time and they got a big post out, you know, we, we're ready to, ready to hire. Last we heard was getting two genders, man. We don't know what we're getting or what we're not getting. So my community's like, well, why ain't we got anybody? I can't tell you that. This is the reason I'm asking for this meeting. I don't, I'm not got nothing to hide from nobody. I'm glad Wes Swain's got a paid, paid member that betters the community in my book. But Wes Swain ain't no better than Lark and Lark ain't no better than Wes Swain and Bryson City or nothing else. So we need to get this process started. The one problem with the process is who's in charge, who hires, who decides? Those things we do need to beat the bush about. So that's why I'm asking the commissioners, all three chiefs, both fire marshals, to have a meeting with HR, whoever, it don't matter. But I'm, I'll get a lot of my questions answered, I'm sure, Friday or Thursday, or whenever day that is. But Charles himself has asked, hey, you go tonight, you get a meeting, then we'll, we'll go and do whatever. Other department's problems is their problems. A Lark is my number one concern and my people, my community's my concern. I want to give them the help they need, whether it be EMS, fire, first responder, or just sit on the couch, have a cup of coffee and tell them everything's going to be all right, whatever it is. But there again, my community's just as important as anybody else's. And I want them to see that I'm trying to do the right thing for our community. So with that being said, I'm, I'm about, I'm not even going to use my time. Guys, I just want to, if you will reach out to me, to our all three chiefs, both fire marshals, we can sit down and talk and decide what we're going to do. And we, then we'll know what, exactly how to go forth as a fire chief. And, and I really appreciate y'all's time. I appreciate Ms. Barker and, and Ms. Brian, what they've done. They're going to try to meet with me this week. And that will probably answer a lot of my questions. But at a convenient time, I would ask for that meeting as well as Charles Bryson's asked me to ask as well. So I'd like for us all to sit down and get a level playing field. Because it's all of us to help Swain County. It's just not me. It's just not her. It's just not Charles Bryson. We're all here, different members to help the community. If we can't do that, we need to step out of the way and let somebody can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Ferguson?
On October 18th, week Saturday, the town hall downhill, there will be a no kings protest. America's sounded on not having a king. Well, the guy we got in office now, he's wanting to be the king. So people are joining all over the nation on no kings protests. So if y'all can make it, if you agree that we don't want a kings, you may want to come. You may not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edward Musher?
It's good to see y'all. It's good to see you. I've got to admit, this is one of the most informative meetings that I've sat at. Widespread the information that was absorbed tonight. Thank you all. It was a thing. Side things, the cameras, you know, listening and talking, listening again. When do, do we get them is the question? Probably now. You know, just think about the cost. You know, the equipment comes with the cost. Anyway, y'all will do that. I, I want to thank the sheriff, the sheriff's department, Bobby Jenkins and, and the county workers for cleaning up that hole. Okay? That was a pleasure. Okay? It's not over by far, but yes, you know, what they did was beyond their job description. Okay? And actually, we don't have a job description for that. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Bobby and your crew. Okay? It was exceptional. It just shows that actually what shouldn't have happened and what we can fix. You know, it's, it's about getting fixing. In a couple of weeks, y'all going to make a decision on that chair. Okay? I think, my view is, we don't, nothing personal, but we don't need anybody that's already been in it. Maybe we need some new blood. We need some new blood that cares, okay? When you make your decisions. Okay? This is something that we don't actually get a chance to say, you know, if you don't get a poll, you know, we get that next year when we get on another election. But you know, new blood. I think it's time for that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Courtney Doos?
Thanks for letting me be here. You guys are doing a fantastic job. Absolutely. I do appreciate also the openness of the meeting tonight. I wanted to touch on the animal control ordinances. It's, you know, as the public, we need to come here and make our voices heard about that. The board's going to be putting somebody in the chair. I hope that we go in a good direction and that we don't continue in what we've seen from the past, where we've watched appointments made behind the scenes, questions left unanswered, and loyalties and what someone can do for someone else prioritize over what they can do for our citizens. The animal control officer, I'm going to go ahead and harp on that. He is one of those appointments that never went out for bid. That man's position, we have paid him for two years. And he has done, I'm not really sure what, because every time I come down here to this office, he's sitting back there glaring at me because, you know, obviously we're adversaries at this point. Why are we paying him? Because Paul goes out and takes care of all these instances. They, they don't have a facility, but they manage to take care of the problem. And what the animal control officer tells them is, I don't have a facility. I can't take care of the problem. So, you know, let's make better decisions than that. That's what I would encourage you to do. That's all. Thank you for what you guys have been doing. You've been working hard too. Thanks for that. And you know where the roads are bad, Phil. And we don't care about below the dam.
Thank you, Courtney. Gentlemen, y'all got anything else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?